If they're going to delay these public hearings, I have this public comment that's for that public hearing.
I think it got emailed in.
Yeah. Do you think it could be heard during the general public comments?
I think we were going to do the public hearing.
They're going to ask for a delay is what they're going to do. What you'll do is you'll open this up.
Because I'm happy, exactly.
And then they will come up and ask for a delay. But I would, if you have any public comments, at least let people do the public comments.
Randy just said nobody's on.
Yeah, and that's totally up to you guys, what you want to do.
Welcome to our March 25 Waxaw Board of Commissioners meeting. We will go ahead and rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence to give thanks and praise.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, let's go ahead and get an adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt or can I ask if there's any amendments or adjustments to the agenda? Hearing done, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, agenda is adopted. Next up, we have general public comments. I've been informed that no one has signed up for general public comments, so we will proceed to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Submit.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The consent agenda is now adopted. Next up, we have recognitions. We do not appear to have any recognitions this week, so we will move on to presentations. I would like to invite Melissa. We have a presentation regarding the smile trailer and a donation.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and Town Staff. I'm Melissa Johnson, the Deputy Director of Recreation, and with me I have Lawrence Schaefer, the owner of Ace Hardware in Waxaw, joining us to honor him and recognize him for the donation of a generator for our smile trailer. I guess I have the clicker, don't I? So our smile trailer, smile trailer for those who don't know, is our sensory-friendly inclusive trailer that we have at our special events, our bigger events, and it's a sensory refuge for anyone who needs a safe place to calm down if they are overstimulated, have any issues with sensory needs. This safe space that we have at our events is something that's unique to Waxaw, and in order to power the trailer itself, so the power inside of the trailer, which runs the electricity and the heat and the air conditioning, it requires a generator. This is something that we had to pay for at every event where we had this, and so now with this donation of a generator, we no longer have to pay for this. So we are so grateful to Lawrence and what he has done by donating this generator for us, and that's the value of it. It's over $1,000, so imagine paying that multiple times a year just to rent one. So we are so grateful and want to say thank you so much.
Thank you, Lawrence, and thank you to Waxaw Ace Hardware. Shop early, shop often. Next up, we have Van Harrell, presentation regarding the Union County reappraisal update.
Good evening. Good to see you all again, a different arena than last time. As a matter of fact, when I put in my GPS, now to go to Waxaw Town Hall, it didn't do the police department. I'm at 6:22, I'm like, there's somebody here, and I remembered, they opened a new town hall, so I had to come over, come over here. Appreciate being here tonight. We want to do a follow-up with the, regarding the reappraisal. This is probably our 25th meeting overall, second time here, second time, we're trying to make a second trip to all the municipalities and some other local community groups as well. We'll get right into it. Some of this is a recap of things you saw in the first presentation back in fall, early part of the winter, so we'll kind of gloss over that a little bit, hit it at a high level, and then kind of go into the valuation changes and kind of provide some clarity on the appeals process, because that seems to be the hot topic, as you can imagine. So why did we do a reappraisal? We're getting this question a lot, plain and simple, we had to. The statute requires a reappraisal under three different circumstances. One, once every eight years is the maximum time allowed between appraisal cycles. There's an optional advancement and a mandatory advancement. The county took action in '21 after that reappraisal to do the optional advancement to a four-year cycle, and that's where we're going to stay until the Board of County Commissioners changes that. So we would have done, we planned to do a 25-reappraisal. The mandatory advancement falls under statute, if your sales ratio number, and I'll explain what that is, falls below 15% of market value or above 15% of market value. So if you're between, if you're below 85 or at 115 or higher, you have to do a reappraisal within three years. In February of 2022, we received notice from the Department of Revenue, your sales ratio after one year is 82%. And so we had, within 12 months, we had to, we triggered a reappraisal. It's how fast the market moved, and we've got some graphical representation that to show you as we go through this. The other reason to do a reappraisal is for fairness and equity. You want to make sure properties are appraised relative to market value where they should be. Higher value properties, you do not want them to be paying at lower values than they should be, and vice versa, you don't want lower value properties paying at higher values. So we have to adjust the assessed values to the market based on sales that have occurred since the last reappraisal, and that provides a stable tax base for the municipalities as well as the county and fire districts. Everybody is impacted by this process. In 2021, we saw a 35.6% total increase, and this is just a recap of that reappraisal cycle. I touched on the trigger notice from the Department of Revenue as well as the adoption of the four-year cycle. To put that in perspective, at the end of 2024, our sales ratio was 66%. It's just under 67. So effectively, we were 34%, 35% undermarket at that point, based on sales that had occurred comparing the sales prices to the assessed values of those properties that have sold, and that's what the sales ratio is indicative of. Progress to date, we now have over 114,000 parcels in the county. That is 10,000 more than in 2021. Total valuation increase, real estate countywide, is just over 60%, and we'll show that in comparison to peer counties on the next slide. The residential, if you break that total 60% increase up into buckets, the residential increase was just under 64%. I guess these are countywide gross numbers, meaning gross meaning that there's no tax relief accounted for in this yet. This is strictly market value without taking any of the value off the top of it. Commercial countywide went up just over 45%, and even exempt properties, we have to value those because we have to report that valuation to the state. So even though buildings like this are not taxed, we do have to perform the full appraisal process on that and determine the value of that property. The biggest single component increase is rural land. Rural land values went up 94%, and that's countywide. The median sales price for a single acre of land throughout Union County is $75,000 an acre. You can imagine that is a driving factor in this process. The good thing for this is, most of this land is in the farm programs, present use value, which means it's taxed at a significantly lower value than the market value. Put it in perspective, if you've got 100 acres of farmland that's valued at $20,000 an acre on the market, we're only taxing you $220 an acre for value on that. So it's a significant tax break for the farmers, which it needs to be because it's not open to the market, it's strictly used for agricultural use. That also applies to forestry tracts and certain horticultural businesses as well. Here's our pure county data. We did a four-year look back on this. These are counties, the top 10 counties in the state population-wise, going back to 2022. Guilford was the first county that had a reappraisal in this four-year cycle. They were right on par with where we were in '21, and then you can see the next year, every reappraisal jumps to north of 50% of an increase, going to Mecklenburg first, then Wake and Cabarrus. This year, there's six of us that were supposed to do reappraisals in the top 10. Buncombe did get theirs deferred because of Hurricane Helene damage. I think they've got a one-year deferment on that, so they're working through that process now to make sure they've got their stuff updated, but they were projecting a 60% as well. In this grouping, we're the second lowest overall increase. Buncombe was the highest at 88%, and believe it or not, that was not the highest increase in the county. There's 31 counties in the state doing reappraisals this year. Almost all of them were triggered by statute because of where the markets moved in the respective jurisdictions. The highest I've heard to this point is when county went up overall 96%. It's almost a complete doubling of the value within that county. Talk about specific Union County market data. What we're seeing, and we'll go through these fairly quickly, prices are still increasing, but they've stabilized. We're not seeing the high volume of sales, and you'll see that in a moment, indicated on one of the slides where things leveled off the past couple of years. December 2024, the median sales price was flat compared to '23, but it was still $436,000 on average for a single-family home, and this is strictly located in Union County. Days on market has increased. We know how the market was in 2022, 2021. Things were on market for as low as nine days. Now you're typically in that 60-day range for days on market. Again, the rate is slowing, as we've seen. As of January 2025, the median sales price, which is after our reappraisal date, and I'll explain why that's important, is $463,000 for a single-family home as of January. What's contributing to this, obviously, is growth. I mean, no matter where you're at in the county, Waxaw, Marshville, Wingate, Monroe, it's all growing. It's a destination county for people that are relocating to the Charlotte region. There's nothing that's going to stop that, unfortunately, fortunately or unfortunately, depending on your perspective, but the population is projected to increase to over 300,000 people by 2030 and the 430,000 by 2050. Here's our sales volume. People ask, how do you do your job? How do you come up with these values? Well, strictly analyzing market data, we had roughly 48,000 sales over the past four years of single-family homes that we used to develop this reappraisal and build the schedule of values, which governs how we do our job for the next four years. Commercial, industrial, we're still a 90% residential county. You're going to see steady sales in that, but it's not going to be high volume, and that's going to continue for the foreseeable future. But you can see in '23 and '24 where the sales activity leveled off at that 10,000 mark, I think we're going to stay there, maybe dip a little below that, just because of volume and supply and demand. There's natural supply and demand issues throughout the county. Because of infrastructure challenges, it's an impediment to building in certain areas. So that's going to continue to kind of leave prices elevated to some respect, but if that's what the market is, that's what it is, and that's what we have to take into effect, into account. Median sales price by year, residential, you can see where it's gone from 350 to 465 as of the end of '24, so it's a steady increase there. Commercial industrial properties have been up and down. The peak in 2022, and it's tailed off a little since then, back to 2021 levels from a standpoint of a median sales price. So one of the questions, another question we received was, my tax value should never be market value. Well, there's not actually, there's nothing, tax value doesn't exist, if you will. By general statute, the uniform reappraisal standard dictates that we, in the year of reappraisal, we reflect the true value of the property estimated by the market, and that true value is interpreted as median market value. Market value is market value. The issue is, you're after a reappraisal, sometimes even months after a reappraisal, your house may sell for more than what the quote "tax value" is. From that standpoint, it's because we're frozen in time. Once we do the reappraisal, until the next reappraisal comes along, our values cannot change, unless something happens to the property, you add to it, it's torn down, destroyed, something like that, we can change the values. But just because of economic conditions, we can't do that. The statute doesn't allow it. That's where, I think that's where the common understanding of quote "tax value" is, because within months after a reappraisal cycle, market value can be significantly higher than what we've got it on for tax purposes. Next slide shows the trends. This is a 40-year chart, goes back to 1986. It's the year-end sales ratio number for each year going back to that date. The orange-colored years are the year prior to reappraisal, so you can see where we bottomed out at. The yellow years are highlighted years are the trigger years, so we've triggered three times. The statute was just put into effect in 2009, or we would have triggered back in the early 90s as well, based on some of the numbers that were there. But you can see, with the exception of the 2009 to 2011 timeframe, which we'd all prefer to forget, I think, from a personal standpoint, the market has always gone higher. That red line indicates market value, and the assessed value is the numbers that are fluctuating on the chart here. It just kind of shows you the timeline of how the markets move compared to when we have to do reappraisals and how the process works. Countywide valuation increased from $32 billion to just over $52 billion. Significant increase, the largest single-year increase, not single-year, largest reappraisal increase that I've seen in the 21 years I've been with the county. And that's one thing, we've got '24 and '25, these are actually '21 values. This is not a one-year increase. There's another question we hear, how come my value go up that much in one year? Well, it didn't, it went up over four years. So you've averaged about a 15% increase in the market annually since 2021. Commercial industrial went from 3.8 to 5.5, of course, there's your exempt valuations, for a total market value just over $60 billion of real estate. Rural land, I think the two telling numbers on this slide are the median home value. As of the 2021 reappraisal, the median assessed home value was $293,000. That is now $403,000. And that, again, it's just indicative of the activity that has occurred in the market, but it's still significantly lower than the December median sales price and the January median sales price. Our sales ratio with the new values in effect is 99.76%. That's about as close as you can get to market without fudging your numbers. And so there are other statistical measures that we look at, that the state looks at, and we'll touch on those in a moment, to speak to the quality of the reappraisal, but we're going to go through some of the, we'll highlight primarily just Waxaw's number here. Again, these are gross numbers. I'm hoping by the end of this week, our first part of next week, we'll have Mr. Hicks and Ms. Dodd, the official tax-based estimates for the town, so you can start working through your budget processes and tax rate calculations. As far as Waxaw is concerned, your total increase for real property in the county is 61.3, in the city is 61.35%. You now have a median home value that went from 356 to 568, significantly above the county median, because it's a smaller geographical area. Your median size home is 2,840 square feet. So that's your Waxaw data. You can compare that, you've got the information, I believe, in your packets to some of the surrounding towns and communities. I'll highlight Marvin because they're right next to you. They did break the $1.1 million mark for median home value in this reappraisal cycle, which is expected if you're in real estate and you look at the market and you see the data that's going around, you would expect that. Waxaw commercial valuation had a 36.6% increase. Some of that's growth, some, factored into all of this is your normal growth as well. So some of this is new construction, it's not just increases of existing homes. So new construction also factors into these numbers. But Waxaw is a 36.6% increase in commercial valuation, which is a little bit lower than the rest of the county, but in line, about with what could be expected with the demographics of the town. The other statistical measures that we look at is a COD, and that's just a measure of the quality and the dispersion of the data. With the acceptable range for this statistic is between 5 and 20. At the end of 2024, we were at 18.79, so we're at the end of that four-year cycle, you're edging up on the upper end of what's considered acceptable, so you want to get that reappraisal done and get it back in line. With the new values in effect, we were at 8.53. We had, this was, this along with the next number was analyzed and tested by a third-party vendor, and with their own calculations, they were within a tenth of a percentage point of where we were as well, so we felt comfortable with that and felt good about the data quality within the reappraisal process. The price-related differential is just a measure of higher value properties assessed values compared to lower value properties and their assessed values. It can indicate regressivity or progressivity in the valuation of properties. Your range on this is .98 to 1.03, with the, again, looking at the number at the end of the 2024, we were just on that upper edge of 1.03. With the new values in effect, we're at 1.004. Now, none of this means that we're perfect, because there's always going to be outliers, and we're going to touch on the appeals process and provide some clarity on that and how to go through that. If we're wrong, help us fix it. Everybody has a right to an appeal, and we want to make sure everybody's fully aware of that and understands this process and how we're working through with taxpayers. There's five stages to the process of appealing your property value. The first is an informal staff-level review. When you submit that appeal, it's effectively an appeal to the Board of Equalization Review, but we have to review all of those appeals as they come in. Currently, we are up to, I think today, we crossed 2,500 appeals, which is a little lower than what we would have expected about this time, but we're headed in the direction of probably 5,000 to 6,000 overall, is our estimates. We plan on the 10%, which would be 11,000, I don't think we'll get there, based on the activity we're seeing right now, but that is how we work through the process. If we can settle the appeal with the taxpayer, roughly 90% of those are settled at the staff review level. We will send those after April 14th, we will send those to the Board of Equalization Review as a consent agenda item, and then we just blanket approve those if we have signed agreement from the taxpayer. If we cannot come to a settlement, you will have a hearing before the Board of Equalization Review, and that is a board disappointed by the County Commissioners. Our chair and likely our vice chair have been on the board for 29 years, and so they're well aware of the process and understand the reappraisal process, they understand the real estate market in Union County. So they're independent of our office, we have to present our case to them, just like the taxpayer does, and so they are an impartial body that is very good at what they do and works closely with taxpayers in the county as well to try to find a middle ground, if you will. Beyond the Board of Equalization Review, if you're still not happy with your value, you can appeal to the Property Tax Commission. We have very few that go there. I think in 2021, we had 25 or 30 appeals that went to the Property Tax Commission out of 5,000, so most of them are handled locally. That is the final stop for evaluation decision. If there's a legal matter or procedural matter that you want to contest on the appeal, then you can appeal to PTC's decision to the appeals court and on from there to the North Carolina Supreme Court, if necessary. So what's the deadline? In your notices you receive, the final statement of that notice asks for the appeals to be filed within 30 days. That is not mandatory, but it is requested so that we can have time to review the appeals and work with the taxpayer prior to a board hearing being scheduled, because the board will not hear an appeal if we have not reviewed it in our office. That actual deadline, prior to April 14th, which is when they convene, we can make the decision in the office if the taxpayer and us comes to an agreement, that's it, there's no hearing scheduled. After the board convenes, all decisions have to be made by the board. The adjournment date for the board is May 28th, so you effectively have almost 90 days to appeal from the date that the notices went out. Once the 28th comes and passes, you can no longer appeal your value for this year. A lot of people will not appeal till they get their tax bill. At that point, it's too late. You have to appeal next year. This year would stand as it is. Again, staff will review all the appeals before the hearing, as required by the Board of Equalization Review. I'm going to walk through the next few slides fairly quickly, but it's just to show you where to go, how to navigate the website, and what you'll see when you're trying to file your appeal. This is the county's main webpage. The section in the middle, there's two areas left and right. If you go to the main page, you're going to have to click on that right arrow and scroll one time. You'll see that property search button. Once you click on that button, it will take you to a search window where you'll put in your name, address, or parcel number, and it will bring up a screen, which is known as your property record card, and we've got the appeal box highlighted in yellow. This has got all the information related to your property, characteristics, devaluation, you can run comparable sales from here, which you can also run at a later step for your property to kind of judge the valuation and see how it looks compared to those in your neighborhood. Click on that appeals button. Click on that appeals button. You'll come up to the appeals portal, and once you've got your property in, it loads your property automatically. You can file an appeal here or you can visit the comparable sales database. The PRC is the screen you were just on, so you don't want to go back there. If you file an appeal, it's going to walk you through even building that comparable sales grid for your property, so that you can submit that with your appeal. All of this is submitted electronically once you get to the end of the process, and this is what the appeal screen here looks like. That goes into our office, into a workflow. We're notified by email, and they're assigned automatically to appraisers and go into their work queue, and they'll work them as they receive them. The last couple of weeks, we've been heavy on the phones, so they haven't been working a lot of them. They're starting to get into that now. So it's a couple of weeks delayed as far as response time, but we usually have six people on the phone. We had to put about 15, including the entire appraisal staff. So we've got 10 appraisers for 114,000 parcels. So it's a heavy workload, a lot for them to do and get done. But this is how you go through the process. If you can't navigate this or you don't have access, call our office. We have paper appeal forms that we'll send you, or you can come by and we'll help you fill it out there in the office. One thing that is important is to make sure you provide evidence when you submit your appeal. We get a lot of appeals with just a statement, says my house isn't worth this much. That gives us nothing to go on. So it's going to require more work on the taxpayer, us reaching out to taxpayer and gathering more touch points, if you will, on the appeal, and it's going to delay them getting a response. And so if you can provide the evidence, whether it's your own fee appraisal, the comparable sales grid from our database, whatever you can provide us, you know your property better than we do. So let us know so we can work with you, try to come to an amicable solution. This is the comparable sales database. When you put your property in, it's going to highlight your house in red and all the cells or the yellow highlights around it. So if you're in your neighborhood, if you're putting in, if you live in a rural area, you may have, it may not initially populate something. You'll have to adjust some of the criteria that you see across the top of that screen, whether it's the distance, the age built, any of those things can bring in more properties to your comparable analysis. I'd like to recognize my staff. I've got two of them with me tonight. Michael Thompson, he's my deputy tax administrator, and Brad Helms is our appraisal manager. Without this group, this process would not happen. There are counties that spend millions of dollars doing this with contractors. We do it in-house. We keep everything local. Nobody knows our market like we do, and that is our goal, is to make sure it stays that way. This is a great group. I put them against any appraisal staff in the state and feel confident in the work that they do. With that, I will be glad to take any questions.
Any questions from the board, then?
I have a quick question. So during the appeals process, you said to upload, you know, information that we used in saying the number was too high. So, just for the audience, so would that be a form of an appraisal from comps in the neighborhood or a market analysis summary that you would have, or it says properties used to create this RVM? Things like that are things that you want individuals to upload, or is there anything else?
Anything that you feel supports your argument on as far as what your value may be is valid for us to review. Fee appraisals are especially helpful if you want to invest in that and have that done. Just keep in mind that any comparables that you submit, the sale date has to be January 1st or prior.
Okay.
It cannot be based on anything that's happened since January 1st. That's a statutory assessment date. Kind of put that in perspective. So we monitor the sales ratio after a reappraisal is done, very closely to kind of see where things are moving. As of the effective date of the reappraisal, when the values went in effect, our sales ratio number was 99.78%, 76%, 78%, whatever it was on the slide. As of two days ago, that sales ratio was 95%. So it's already shifted 4% because, and that's a median number. Obviously, there's some more, some higher, some lower, but the median, which is what the state monitors, is at 95%. So the market's still moving up. That's what we're seeing. But there may be aspects of your property that we have no information about, whether it's condition, there may be damage that we're not aware of. Anything that you feel like can support your own assessment of the value of your property, submit that and we'll review it.
Okay. So, does it have to go back a certain number of years? Are you limited to the number of years? So this is 2025. So if you have something that shows something back in 2013 or 2014...
That's not going to be valid.
That's not going to be valid.
No, you're going to want to, you're going to want to look at sales that have occurred within the last couple of years.
Within the last few years. Okay.
Definitely, definitely no older than 2021, because that was the last reappraisal. But anything you can get for '23, '24 in particular, that's going to be, that's going to be the best evidence, because the market's going to shift. If it's a sale from '22, the market shifted quite a bit since then. So we're going to have to analyze that and then apply some kind of time adjustment to account for the valuation on the properties being shown.
How does Union County, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to ask for a question.
How does Union County compare, you know, when you look at adjustments that need to be made based on people filing appeals? Does it get adjusted a lot here?
It's situational. It's all about the individual property and the issues around that property. I would say we had, I'm trying to remember, Brad, you may remember off the top of your head more than I do. In '21, we had roughly 5,000 appeals. 90% of those were settled with about 500 going to the board. I've never, I honestly track the percentage adjustment, because once the board says whatever the value is, that's what the value is, whether we agree with it or not. I think we estimate about a 2% appeal loss from the total valuation, which I think this year is $1.2 billion would be the estimated appeal loss, at least our starting point. Back in '21, I think, I was looking at the numbers the other day, we started with $600 million as the estimated appeal loss, and I think we ended up in the 450 range. So not quite as much. Again, it's going to depend on situation.
Do you guys ever compare that with other counties and, you know?
That's not something that's typically monitored from between jurisdictions.
Yeah.
It's a good question.
Just curious, yeah.
And I've got the analytical mindset, okay, let me go back and think, how can we do this? But the cycles and locations are so different that I think it would be difficult to compare apples to apples.
And do you think getting your own appraisal, I don't know if it would be easier, but does that hold any more water, because they'll be looking at the home and the condition that it's in? Because what I'm hearing from a lot of people, what people are questioning is, well, I only have, you know, my house doesn't have upgrades, and they're basing it on all these houses next to me that have pools and this and that. So does that make a difference, do you think?
There's two answers to that question. First, yes, the fee appraisal carries a lot of weight, especially with the board. But the other answer to that question is, we're not, if your neighbor has a pool, we're not comparing you to a pool. We make adjustments for those things. We're not going to put value on your house that if, they've got a $20,000 pool, from a value standpoint, we're not going to have that $20,000 on your house. So every property, it is mass appraisal, it's not fee appraisal, so there may be some things that slip through the cracks. It's not often, but that's why we tell people, help us be right, and you know your property better than we do. But we're very careful to make adjustments based on age, condition, quality of builder, because you have some neighborhoods that have multiple builders. And we make sure that we're aware of those scenarios, and we'll adjust accordingly as we're going through the process.
So, little question I had was, about how long do you expect the appeals process to take if it's fairly straightforward?
Once we can start working the appeals, because we're two weeks in at this point, you file your appeal today, it's going to be probably three to four weeks before you hear an answer, because we had two weeks where they strictly were working on the phones with minimal work on the appeals themselves. Some of them, if they're straightforward, they'll go through them fairly quickly. We have some responses that are being prepared. I think, looking at the workflows, I saw roughly 80 today that were ready to head out the door and be in response to the taxpayer. So I think they'll work through them as fast as they can. We have, because we don't know what the volume's going to be, so we have appeal hearings scheduled through the end of the year, three days a week. We'll cancel those as we need. They meet on Mondays and Wednesdays from 9:00 to 12:00, and Thursday evenings from 4:00 to 7:00, for those who can't get there in the mornings. But you have to file the appeal first, and then we'll work through it with you, and then get you scheduled if you need to continue it to the board. I think in '21, we were through, the board was through with most of the real estate appeals by mid-July. So it does take a little while.
That was kind of my follow-up. How long do you expect all of them? Okay.
We'll have some things that straggle through the end. Personal property, that appeal period's at the end of the year, because it's after you get your tax bill. Real estate's a little bit different, but we'll have some things that straggle through throughout the end of the year.
And I think it's fair just to reiterate, too, that the appeals decisions are made, they're made based on data.
Yes.
Real, hard information that the residents can provide to justify their reason for the appeals.
The other thing I want to reiterate is, so Waxaw has a 61% increase in value. That does not mean if your property went up 60%, you're not going to get a 60% tax increase, unless the jurisdiction doesn't change your tax rate. I can tell you, the county will drop their tax rate. In 2021, they dropped to 25%. Almost revenue, I think it was one penny from revenue neutral, factored into that for school bond issues. But that, I would feel very confident in telling you that the tax rates will go down in the majority of the municipalities and the county. And so don't just assume or think that you're going to have that 60%, 70% tax increase just because your value went up that much.
Yeah, I imagine a lot of people who want the reappraisal or, you know, appeal the reappraisal probably think that it's going to be 60% jump. Do you guys try to head that off when, you know, like if you get, do you get a lot of calls where people are thinking it's 60% jump?
We do. And that, because it's sticker shock. And we're at 95, 95% of my staff lives in the county. They're dealing with the same situation that everybody else is. I think the difference is, we see the data daily, and so we know what's coming. We know what's happening, whereas the average homeowner, they got their value in '21 and stayed the same for four years, and all of a sudden, here we are. So we do get a lot of that. Reasons for, and we're very clear, we've got information on our website as far as valid basis is for appeal. Ability to pay by statute is not one of those bases for appeal. We have ways to work with people on that, whether it's payment plans, whether it's trying to see if they qualify for various tax relief programs, those type of things. But we do have a lot of those conversations. We've had a lot of them, and we'll continue to have a lot of them throughout this year.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much. Any last questions?
All right. Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you again for the presentations. Very helpful.
Thank you.
Next up, we have James Kelly with an award announcement.
Well, good evening. I'm excited to announce that we have been awarded a CRTPO, the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization, award for the Helms Road Extension Project, also known as Waxaw Parkway West. So that total award has been granted to Waxaw in the amount of approximately $4.92 million, and this will construct the missing link between NC-16 and Waxaw Marvin Road. So you can see these two figures here. The first figure displays the already programmed NC DOT CSX Railroad Overpass Project that's scheduled to start construction here momentarily. And then Figure 2 to the right displays the extension of that Helms Road to 16, ultimately completing the Western Bypass of the Waxaw Parkway. So this is huge for the town. The town was awarded those funds. In that blue line, you can see that 16 to Waxaw Marvin, and then the tie-in to the NC DOT Railroad Overpass. From a project programming and next step perspective, the project will be locally administered by the town of Waxaw. And in addition to the $4.9 million, Waxaw's proportional cost share is estimated to be approximately $5.7 million, bringing the total project cost a little over $10 million for the entire project. Those funds are split out amongst the next five years, with the most expensive cost being the construction year, five years from now in FY, or four years from now, in FY 2029. So, right now, for preliminary engineering, that's just a fancy word for designing, the design cost is estimated to be about $750,000, and then rideaway is scheduled for FY '27 with an estimated cost of $848,000 for our proportional share. And I would like to note that these are additional money. So this is Waxaw's proportional share. The other $5 million is from federal funds. So that's just something to consider. And note that these fiscal years are representative of the NC DOT fiscal year, because it's through their process. So their fiscal year starts on October 1st of each year, which is different from our fiscal year. From a project programming standpoint, the product is now awarded a STIP number, which is HL0158, and this is important information to know when you're communicating with the state legislature. In addition, this project will complete the Waxaw Parkway Western Bypass. It's been a long requested project, and I would just like to thank all of the municipalities, as well as all the people involved in helping to bring this project to fruition. And our goal is to complete construction in FY 2029, so just a few years away. So, any questions?
All right. This is really good news, so we're excited to get this started, hopefully in the near future. But 2029 does seem a while away, but from a road project perspective, that's just right around the corner.
That's right.
Exactly.
We can't fast-forward that at all, can we?
Actually, we can. So we can fast-forward it, but you can only fast-forward it about a year. That's through the Board of Transportation. We could do an amendment request if we wanted to speed it up a year.
When do we expect to push dirt, then, on the overpass section, the CSX section?
Yeah.
That's already kind of funded and...
Yeah, so there's plenty to start construction fiscal year 2026, and it's expected to be about two and a half to three years on that. So they're going to be ending their overpass project right when we're starting our project to tie in.
That's great news.
Yep.
Thank you, James.
You're welcome.
And James, if we were to accelerate that timeline, I would assume that that also accelerates our payment schedule.
That is correct.
Right. And so we'd have to factor that into our annual budgets, which we need to think about.
Although with our current timeline, it's a really good timeline, because it typically takes about two years between the processes anyways. So people, you know, the common question is, well, why does it take so long? Or what all is involved in the process? Remember, this is a federal process, so you have to go through all the checkboxes to make sure that you're meeting the different parts of each phase. So it's really three phases. It's the design phase, the PE process, which will take about two years to get through. The rideaway negotiation phase with various property owners will take about another two years to get through. So the current timeline is good. It can be accelerated, though. Note that if you do decide to accelerate it, we'll have to go through an amendment with the Board of Transportation, the State Board of Transportation, and then that money amount would then be accelerated as well.
Sure, but in that same timeline, based on what we just heard from the county, that would probably be also around when their next reassessment would be scheduled. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Y'all ready to talk about some art?
Sure.
Here we go. So I'm actually tag teaming it with Ms. Melissa here, and we're going to talk about all the art projects that are coming up, and to get us ready for Caladoscope in May, which will blink and there we'll be. All righty. First off, all the art projects that you'll hear tonight are, has been vetted through the Public Art Committee and gone through all the requirements, guidelines for the art policy, through the rotation art for the sculpture, also the tiny art gallery that's under the water tank, and the butterfly art that is across from David DeJewarne's Park, near the railroad tracks. So you'll hear tonight all the locations, which we've got laid out right there, and then also funding sources in the park and rec budget, so that's already wrapped up and taken care of. And then we also did great partnership with our downtown association committees. So they helped out with the art selection on the sculpture walk as well. So collaboration is what we talk about, and so we're making that happen. And then we had over 12 submissions this time. which is awesome because we didn't have as much last year. So this is getting known for public art for Waxahaw. This is a positive thing, so that's really awesome. And again, we're going to, timeline is to have them all revealed at Kaleidoscope on the 10th. Okay? I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Melissa.
Went too fast. All right, so I'll go through each of the sculptures that were selected. And imagine this as starting with Site Number 1, like you are in downtown near Jekyll and Hyde and walking towards Rehoboth. So that's how we have them numbered for 1 through 6. Currently, we have three sculptures that are in place that will be removed over the next month. And then the additional three pads, one was actually poured today. So there's two additional pads that will be poured. So we will have six new sculptures that will be installed over the next month. So at Site Number 1, that is Matt Amonte's piece. He is from Eastern North Carolina, and that will be the start of the Sculpture Walk. And then you'll move to Site 2, where Chris Wilson will have his stone carved piece that is a weather-resistant Georgia Cherokee marble that is hand carved. And that piece, you'll actually notice sooner than the rest of them because he's the one who has the wooden carved sculpture that's currently on display. And he, because he's from Georgia, has to plan his travel. And so he'll be removing the piece that he currently has in town and installing this one. So it'll be a quick transition there. The next one, Site 3, that top piece is Nico Amortigues. He is an artist that's really well-known in Charlotte, but he's originally from Colombia. And Ave Gallo refers to the chicken, so something that's a nod to his hometown. Also have chickens here in Waxahaw, so they don't look like that, but it's cool. The Site 4 is artist Lawrence Fair, and that is a Whispers to Turtles piece. So there's a little turtle detail that's at the top of it. Too far. Site 5 will be the Sunflowers. That is by artist Scott Griffin. He is from the Fort Mill area. And then the last piece, it's kind of hard to tell with the lighting, but it's that top piece. It is sitting on a concrete pad right now. There is a bowl that is on top that will have a different plant planted in there, so that part would be different. But that would be the end of the Sculpture Walk there. So a good variety of different pieces that will hopefully get people talking about art. And that just goes through the timeline again. These pieces are on loan for a year. We do pay the artists each a stipend for them to keep their pieces on display. We'll do the unveiling at Kaleidoscope Festival on May 10th, and they will be up through April of next year. We open the call for artists for the following year's show in November of this year, so that will be coming out again. This one. So the Tiny Art Gallery display is right under the water tank. And we have a photographer who is local to Waxahaw who will be printing some of her photographs and having them on display through later this summer. So we'll open that call again, I think end of summer is when we'll put it out. And so the idea is that we have this on a little bit more consistent rotation basis, so we can have some fresh art there. But these will be on display. And then finally, our butterfly sculpture art. So imagine this as the butterfly itself. These different flowers, pollinators, birds will all be hand-drawn onto this, and the committee is actually going to be painting. We have a really talented artist on our committee, Jennings, who is one of our newest committee members. She drew out this drawing, so we'll be transferring it onto the butterfly itself and painting it as a group. And we'll have this done by the summer. Does anybody have any questions?
That's very cool. Any questions from the board? All right.
Thank you.
I like everyone. Look forward to seeing it. Thank you.
Should be great. Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
All righty. Next up, Ashley Layton. We have a public hearing to present.
Good evening, Board and Mayor. I actually have a request from the applicant to speak to you all quickly.
Sure.
So that's what she wanted to talk about, actually. So how did you want to? Okay, so I should present, open the public hearing, and then?
We have to open it regardless. Couldn't hear because my mic wasn't on. I apologize. So you need to open the public hearing, and then it can be continued to a certain date, and then you close the public hearing. So that you can continue at your date, and we don't have to re-advertise.
Very well. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing?
All in favor. Any opposed? This public hearing is now open. Ashley, go ahead and kick us off.
Okay. Petition rz0159192025 is a request by the applicant Waxahaw Ventures LLC for the annexation of approximately 46.85 acres. The property is currently a donut hole in Waxahaw's jurisdiction. The property is located on Rehoboth Road and is next to Preserve subdivision. To the left, we've got Rehoboth. To the right, we have Preserve Phase 1. And the right side there shows that little red square. I did want to point out that that is a Union County pump station.
She doesn't need to present, but if she wants to.
If she doesn't want to, I mean...
You can present if you want to, but if you don't want to, we can just continue it.
Is that acceptable?
You need to use the word "continue." We're continuing it to, what date do you want to continue it to?
Okay. Ms. Bridget, would you like to?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Bridget Grant, Land Use Consultant with Moran Van Allen. Happy to be here tonight on behalf of Waxahaw Ventures. We'd like to request a continuation to the next public hearing next month, so we have a little more time to work through the issues.
Which is April 8th?
That's fine. Thank you.
Here at Town Hall?
Perfect, sir.
I have one question.
If it's a full month, if we did a full month, what would the? April 22nd, I think. Thank you.
So you wish to get a continuation until April 22nd?
I do have a question, though. So letters were sent out and signs were put up, so is that something now we have to re? We paid for that at the town level, so do we have to redo that now because it's been continued?
Well, if it's continued to a date, and we're announcing the date here, it's April the 22nd, 6:30 at Town Hall, we don't have to re-advertise.
But still, we have everybody here now. Why not just have the public hearing?
We had one public comment that was emailed in that Barbie can read into the record tonight.
Yeah.
No one else is...
Get it done, right?
For public comment, but we can go ahead and get tonight's comment into the record.
So if they want to, it's a voluntary annexation. If they want to continue, they can ask for a continuance, and you can have a motion to continue it. But it's also a general rezoning petition. And if you don't want to grant the continuance for the rezoning, you don't have to. But I would recommend that you go ahead and, since they go hand in hand, continue both of them.
Can we go ahead and read public comments now, or should that also be postponed?
You should postpone it.
Okay.
Because we're continuing the public hearing.
Okay, so we will do the continuation, and we will go ahead and postpone those public comments until April 26th? 20, 22nd, sorry. And then it looks like I need to request a motion for a continuation to public hearing until April 22nd.
Okay, so there's a motion to continue the public hearing until April 22nd at 6:30 PM at Town Hall.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right. We'll do a continuation for this matter, as well as the general public hearings regarding the rezoning petition as well.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have old business, Mr. James Kelly.
Good evening. So this is a request for the board to amend, actually to adopt a resolution RES 2025008. This was adopted at your last meeting, but there is a request to amend based upon the Union County Board of Commissioners' meeting on March 17th for the purpose that they had, that they held to receive comments related to the naming of roads. So the request here is rather simple and straightforward. Is, the request is just to switch the two segments. So previously, Segment C and E, you can see highlighted there. Previously, that was named as King Hagler Road. They wanted to swap that with Helms Road. The reason being is because there's three property owners along that section of road that do not wish to change their address. So by doing so, they can keep their same address, which is reasonable, and then swap to Segment D and name Segment D, that new alignment, as King Hagler Road. And I just want to emphasize, yeah, there's a small differentiation between the lengths of those segments. With that said though, and considering the future Helms Road extension, that could also be renamed to King Hagler Road, and you would actually get an increased length of roadway that way too. So really, it's a win-win and reasonable request, and happy to take any questions.
And we're thinking that King Hagler name could also apply to the name of the overpass itself.
That's correct.
Yeah. Any other questions from the board? Okay. Can I get a motion to adopt Resolution 2025008?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving right along. Next up, we have new business, Barbie. We have some meetings to schedule, it sounds like. So this is for the board to consider a budget workshop.
Correct. I've provided three weeks for you all to decide how many days, if you need more than one, to schedule your budget workshops. Last year, you held a special meeting on April the 29th. So staff is recommending that maybe possibly more workshop dates are warranted for this year.
Does the board have any recommendations beyond these dates? And then does the board have a preference for any of these dates?
Are these dates during the day or during the evening?
These can be scheduled anytime to fit your schedule. I do know that last year, you met at 1 o'clock. But if your schedule does not permit that, then what we could do is start the budget workshop and continue it to another day if you need to, so that we could have everybody at the workshop if it was to be held in the evening.
So I'll go ahead and just throw an idea out there if the board is amenable. At the moment, for me, I can make any time work, the week of the 28th through May 2nd. So that would be the third option that is being presented.
My only preference, if I were to request any, would be to meet on a Friday. So if folks have a preference towards Fridays, can't meet May 2nd, that sounds like a no then.
I can meet the other Fridays.
So 29th, 30th, it sounds like?
I can do the 25th out of 18th. No, Friday, 25th.
How many workshops are we looking at?
It's our call. It depends on how long we feel we need to kind of go through the budget.
Well, that's kind of what I was thinking. If we wait to the third week, then that doesn't give us much...
Time.
Time. I know, I mean, I'm flexible the first two weeks, and I can, I can't do April 28th, but other than that, I can do...
So 28th is your only out date?
Yeah.
Okay.
21st and 25th will be more available during the day, but I can do evening any week, really.
I can make the 21st work anytime. 21st?
And I do think that we need to account for more time this year.
So can we do two dates?
That's why maybe the 21st would be a good starting day, and then something the week of the 28th?
I can't do Mondays.
Okay.
I could in the evening, but not during the day.
How does the evenings work in general? Can we do as early as 5:00 or 5:30? Or what are we thinking?
I could probably be here at 5:00.
5:00? Can we try for 5:00 on the 21st?
Which day of the week is that?
It's a Monday.
Monday, the 21st at 5:00 PM.
Okay.
Okay, we can target that? 5:00 PM on Monday, the 21st.
5:00 PM? You said 5:00 PM?
5:00 PM, yes. And then do we want to select a date, the week of the 28th? It looks like we had the 28th and the 2nd were no good, so 29th, 30th, or May 1st? 29th is a board meeting, isn't it?
No.
No, 22nd. Yeah, so 29th is okay. So 29:30 or May 1st? Is there another day there that works for everyone?
Any of those dates?
Any of those dates? Evening again, 5:00 PM?
Okay.
I concur personally. So let's go ahead and try the 29th then. That's a Tuesday. We're all used to meeting on Tuesdays. So we'll do the 29th also at 5:00 PM. Fun with budgets. So just to put this out there then, are we in agreement that we will meet on April 21st? That is a Monday at 5:00 PM, and then again on April 29th, a Tuesday, also at 5:00 PM? Is everyone in agreement on those?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. Sounds like we got a party scheduled, people. Who's bringing the drinks? Anything else?
Mayor, could you set a third date on?
A third date?
I really think it may take.
All right. We got a request for a third date. Back at it. Do we want to look for something in that first week of May? Is that getting us too late, or is the first, you're not here? Okay. Is second week of May then an option, or should we look for something maybe at the tail end of the week of the 21st? Say the 24th or the 25th?
Nothing the first week, between the 14th and 17th.
14th to the 17th?
Just keep in mind that you'll need to bring this and adopt it sometime in May so that we can get it to the state by the 30th.
Two nights in a row? It keeps it fresh too, so. Everybody agreeable to the 30th?
Yeah, why not?
Why not? Bringing drinks anyway. And the 30th, 5:00 PM. So I will just reiterate then. We have Monday, April 21st, Tuesday, April 29th, and Wednesday, April 30th, all at 5:00 PM. Is everyone agreeable to those three dates? Any opposed? Okay. Who's bringing the deviled eggs? Devil dogs will work. All righty. Anything else on this item, Barbie?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. I did get a notice from our town attorney. There was a discussion we were going to have in closed session, but I'm told that that is not appropriate for a closed session item. Do you want to discuss the 34-acre park, Mr. Hicks? Were you most familiar with that, or who do we want to? There was an offer about the 34-acre park? Who had that? Yeah, I was informed that that would not be appropriate for a closed session item.
I keep forgetting to turn my mic on. In a closed session, you can discuss acquisition of real estate if you are going to pay money and acquire it, but you cannot discuss in a closed session the sale of real estate if you're selling the real estate. That's not eligible for a closed session. Does that clear things up?
Yes, that makes it perfectly clear to me, and I think that makes it clear to the board. Was there anything on this item we wanted to discuss then, or?
Well, I know we don't have that on the agenda, so then I know that, I thought that was something we were discussing in closed session. So should we add that to the next meeting, or?
Sure, we can certainly do that. I see no reason... Sure, we can certainly do that. I see no reason not to.
Because we haven't added that to the agenda now.
Yeah, we can get a more formal packet as to what that's about. So we'll put that on the agenda then for the April 8th meeting.
That's fine.
Sound good, Barbie?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. All right, that takes care of that item. Next up?
April 18th?
Pardon me?
April 18th.
April 18th meeting, we'll talk about that, yeah. Next up, we have leadership reports. Interim Town Manager, Mr. Richard Hicks, kick us off.
Tom, I don't have anything this evening.
Well, you know, if you don't have anything. Anyway, we'll go off to Mr. James Kelly. I know you had some build updates that you gave us. Were you going to discuss some of those? Awesome.
So good evening again. Just a few updates from the engineering department. So right now, we are interviewing for our staff engineer position. We're expecting to have the interviews completed this week and next week, so that is exciting news. And then also, I have provided the board with a two-page memorandum summarizing, I just want to note that this is not an all-inclusive list. This is just the multitude of transportation projects that were most commonly inquired on. And I also want to provide the board an update on some of the NC DOT projects. So this two-page memo, you know, tallies up all the notes, so you don't have to keep writing while I'm going over each project. Again, the purpose is, engineering staff is just providing an update to the board regarding upcoming transportation projects throughout the town. And note that some of these timelines are subject to change, just depending upon project scheduling. So multiple impacts from the NC DOT side of things. So staff met with NC DOT on Monday, March 17th, just to get some updates on the projects that NC DOT is proposing throughout the town. So I will like to note that while some of the projects listed below have been delayed, the town of Waxall is still fortunate to have these projects remain on the prioritization list. Other municipalities are having to grapple with some projects that were removed from the state list. So Waxall is very, very fortunate, and we're grateful that these projects are still moving forward. So first things first, NC 75 resurfacing. I know we get comments about it almost every single day, the craters in the road over there, you know. NC 75 is not a town-maintained facility. It is a NC DOT-maintained roadway. And NC DOT is currently resurfacing. They've already started. The scope is from the South Carolina State Line to about where the Circle K is, NC 75 and Old Providence Road. I will note that downtown, there are expected to be impacts early to mid-April. Most of the work will be limited to night work, so downtown will have a complete resurfacing throughout our limits. So that'll be nice once that work is done. Some impacts that the residents can expect is some of that on-street parking along 75, especially in front of the businesses, will be closed off during the construction. That's just to make sure that the construction area is safed off and is able to be resurfaced each night. Some other updates, U 5769AA, and these numbers are just the numbers pulled from the State Transportation Improvement Program. U stands for urban, R is rural, and so on. So U 5769AA just is the Bonds Grove Church Road and NC 16 intersection. So a lot of the complaints that we get are, you know, I can't turn left there. Well, great news on that one. NC DOT is starting construction FY 2026, so just a year away. And they will be adding that left turn lane and traffic signal at that intersection. So folks traveling that way, that'll be a huge improvement for those folks. Next up, along the same U 5769 route, this is segments A and B, which refers to the Providence Road widening, or the NC 16 widening project. The scope of this project is obviously along Providence Road from Ray Road south to Waxall Parkway. Right now, NC DOT is currently in the right-of-way and utility coordination phase, and unfortunately, the project got delayed about a year, so they plan to start construction FY 2030. Excuse me. Now, one of the other projects that we've already talked about, the P 5748B project, is the Helms Road grade separation project. That is a project that ties into our newly awarded Helms Road extension project. The scope of that project is a grade-separated railroad crossing or overpass from Helms Road to NC 75. Current phase is right-of-way and utility coordination, and they're expected to start construction FY 2026, with an expected about two and a half to three years to complete that overpass project. Some other projects occurring throughout the town is U 6248, which is the roundabout there at the Circle K at NC 75 and Old Providence Road. Again, the scope of this is just a roundabout improvement. At that intersection, it's hard for folks to turn left. There's an oddly angled intersection there, but that roundabout will help to alleviate that and to decrease some of those high-sensitivity collisions that we are seeing at that intersection. Current phase, DOT is working through right-of-way. Construction timeline, DOT is expected to start during the summer. The key reason there is because that intersection will be closed throughout the duration of the construction, so they want to close that intersection right after school gets out and hopefully open it back up before school gets back in session. So the current timeline on that is construction summer '27, or possibly summer '28. Some other projects, just DOT-related, that are not necessarily Waxall projects, but are impact Waxall. So Newtown Road and Cuthbertson Road, I know our Lawson folks ask about that intersection all the time. There is a roundabout programmed at that intersection, and DOT is currently in right-of-way, and they will be starting construction 2027. On the other side of town, Waxall Marvin Road and Bonds Grove Church Road, that is a project with NC DOT, Union County, and Marvin. Scope of that project is also a roundabout at that intersection. So current phase is right-of-way and utility coordination, with construction start FY 2028. Moving on to some of Waxall's locally administered projects, you know, we have the Broom Street roadway projects improvements scheduled. That's HL 0115 at NC 16 and 75. The scope of that project is to widen Broom Street to three lanes, add that left turn lane from NC 75 to 16 to help improve the flow along that area, and also upgrade our pedestrian facilities in the downtown vicinity. Current phase is preliminary engineering or design right now. We're expected to move to right-of-way 2027 and construction 2028. Also, an update on the Kensington Drive roadway improvements, EB 5950. The scope of this project is corridor improvements between NC 16 and Sunset Hill Road. We just closed on the final parcel, and we are in right-of-way certification now with NC DOT, expected to start construction later this year. Also, newly awarded, that new number there, HL 0158, that's the Helms Road extension. And as you guys have already heard, that is the scope of that project would be to extend the existing Helms Road to NC 16 and tie in with that railroad crossing overpass, completing the western bypass of the Waxall Parkway. Current phase is design. We'll be looking at right-of-way 2027 and construction 2029. Some other projects, just to be aware of, you know, recently, DOT closed down the Waxall-Marvin Road Bridge for some interim repairs. I will note that DOT plans to complete the full bridge closure and bridge replacement starting September 2026. With this project, it is likely to expect months of that road being closed. So some of the improvements that Waxall is working on now, in advance of that, to help get us ahead of the game there, is, number one, Pine Oak Road and Waxall Marvin Road. We are working to bring that to construction this fall and realign the intersection and add traffic signalization at that intersection. And you all are familiar with that intersection. That's the one with the recorded fatality. So we'll hopefully, that traffic signal will help to mitigate for those angled collisions and help to bring more safety to that intersection. In addition, Pine Oak Road and Prescott Glen Parkway, we are proposing to connect that with a roundabout to a signalized intersection. So anybody going north on Pine Oak Road can get over to Prescott Glen Parkway, take a left at a signalized intersection versus what they do today, which is where they turn left on Pine Oak Road at an unsignalized intersection. And that intersection is very dangerous. Construction is anticipated to start on that roundabout this summer. We're actually having a pre-con meeting with the folks later this week. On top of that, we have the Millbridge Parkway and Kensington Drive traffic signal. So we have progressed design, and design has been approved. NC DOT has approved those plans. And so next steps, we've already started, is talking with the HOAs, getting those right-of-entry agreements, as well as the adjacent property owners as for the easement agreements. Construction is expected spring of next year for that. So those projects will be built and constructed in advance of the Waxall Marvin Road Bridge replacement, which will help in the bigger picture, so to say, when that bridge and road is closed for several months. On top of that, you know, we get a lot of questions about Rehoboth Road and NC 75. The scope there is traffic signalization improvements, some updates on that. You know, we had to work with the Railroad, CSX Railroad, get that agreement executed, and we're working to schedule to have CSX onsite during construction. So next steps is to proceed with an NC DOT pre-construction meeting and request CSX onsite, Roadmasters, and that, work through that process. So construction is still anticipated, probably within the next month or so. And you know, we get a lot of questions, but no certificates of occupancy have been requested to date for that, for that improvement, and the corresponding development. Also, just a little note, you know, we get calls from the Kensington Elementary School and folks around that area, and they're like, well, can you connect that missing length of sidewalk there, right across from Town Hall? And the short answer is yes, we're working on that. It's just a sidewalk connection from Kensington Elementary to Town Hall, and then ultimately improving the Kensington and Waxall Marvin intersection with pedestrian crosswalk upgrades there. Currently, we're finishing up the survey, and then within the next, let's say, two to five months, we'll have that fully implemented. So that was a lot of information. It's not all-inclusive. There are several other improvements not on this list. These are just the most common that come up. So happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the board?
James, I've just maybe got one question for you with respect to the NC 75 resurfacing. We understand from all the studies that NC DOT has done that most of the traffic coming through Waxall is through traffic. And I also understand that this is happening at nighttime, but that could, that will force some traffic through maybe some of the smaller neighborhoods that we've got in downtown. Are there any maybe traffic mitigation strategies we could explore to protect some of those homes? Because there's small one-way streets, and you know, that could be disruptive even at night.
Yeah. We definitely are. It's just a matter of when that happens. So as a part of our safety action plan, which Commissioners Wedger and Westlake serve on, we are exploring those options to help make and bring more of a safety culture around, especially pedestrians, because they're the most vulnerable users of our roadway. They're the ones, you know, if they get into a collision, they're likely going to suffer high severity or fatality cases. So definitely with those roadways, we are focusing on that with that plan. And then, once we are able to move toward implementation later next year, that's when that would come into play.
Excellent. Well, thank you for that review. I think that helps the public, gives the public a good sense of how much is really going on.
All right. Thank you.
Lots of stuff. All righty, next up, Ms. Dina.
Good evening again. So I'm going to give you a park-and-wreck update on what all cool things are happening with park-and-wreck and the facilities. Just to give you a heads-up, Mr. Kevin Stars, our fire marshal, has actually been doing a wonderful job on facilitating the 12-Mile Creek cleanout. That is with the Army Corps of Engineers. That's going to start within the next two weeks. So you're going to see equipment in 12-Mile Creek from our municipality lines to the suspension bridge. So don't be alarmed if you see people in there cutting up trees and taking it out. We will have a exit plan at Town Creek and at Nesbit. So certain areas of those parks will be closed on the days that they're there, because that's their exit strategy of getting it out of the creek and then taking it off. So this is super exciting, because that means we have less flooding in our parks and on our greenways. So this is excellent news. I'm giving you an update about the Waxall Learning Center. The town and ADW are working through the bid documents with the lowest bidder. There is some miscommunication in that, and also with the AIA contract and getting that complete package to bring back to y'all next month. So we have the full picture of cost analysis of it, all the external costs as well, with the lowest bidder. Okay? So look out for that coming to you. With WA, we are setting up our final meeting to go over our notes and finishing, wrapping that up. With events, April the 12th is a busy day for Waxall. So in your packet that I gave you has all the wonderful information about the events happening that day. We'd love to see you out if you want to help with Shred Day, Litter Sweep, Earth Day's happening that day. And also, we're sending a couple representatives to Union County Library to the Volunteer Expo as well. So we're all over the place on that day, starting at 8:00 a.m. Skate Night is the, at the end of the month, we're actually going to have it at the Downtown Park, utilize the pump track for the first time with Skate Night. And then we also have some outside areas at the Flex Court as well. So that's going to be new and exciting. Program Guide, we are still in within our lovely program guide right now until June, so please check out all the cool things that are happening at all of our facilities. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Awesome thoughts.
Thanks again, Ms. Dina.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it all. And any comments from the board?
Yes.
Go for it.
I have been asked by members of the community to address the recent falsehoods that were shared by some on this board. As a board member, I am entitled to engage in conversations with staff members. And over the past seven years in office, I have had numerous discussions with staff to seek their expertise and opinions and to share ideas and collaborate. This board has dedicated the last three months on the search for a new town manager. The staff member who is mentioned was actively involved in this process, and we have had several candid discussions about it. Immediately upon hearing about the rumors circulating from staff, I responded to the interim town manager and told them there was no truth to these claims. However, some on this board chose to create their own narrative and mislead the public. Furthermore, there have been multiple false, inaccurate, and inappropriate comments made about me on social media platforms that have warranted an investigation by law enforcement and my attorney. The disinformation directed at me could have easily been avoided had some had a simple conversation with me to gain clarity. This is the professional behavior I expect moving forward from all members of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I do.
Ms. Brenda, go for it.
Turn on my mic. Is that on? Okay. I just would like to address a couple of points from the mayor's statement on March 11th. But I want to begin with talking about accountability. By its definition, it means being answerable for one's actions. In the workplace, it means we are responsible for our performance, behavior, and decisions. I believe that in order for this board to move forward, there must be accountability on all sides. The statement by the mayor did not speak to both sides of the dais being accountable for their actions, nor did address both sides of the dais, both sides of the coin. Things or issues were not and are not one-sided. The board, although we differ, have not always, and I quote, "voted in a predictable 3-2 fashion on everything." When a commissioner suggests something on either side, I do not believe you should automatically think that their side of the dais will support that suggestion. A statement was made by a commissioner, which the mayor commissioned, a statement was made by a commissioner at the last meeting, which the mayor... at the last meeting, which the mayor, Commissioners Don and Wedra agreed with. I have publicly from this dais on more than one occasion, agreed with Commissioner Wedra. So it is not always predictable in everything in a 3-2 fashion. If the coin is flipped and there are pictures of this board being depicted as bobbleheads, and I personally dressed in a man's suit and tie, when on the dais, I asked that this picture be changed, and I was told it was a joke and that the commissioner would keep the depiction that way if he wanted to. When we look to working together or even attempting to do so, there have been negative comments on Facebook posts, YouTube, and other social media sites. I personally am not on social media, but have been made aware of many things. We have been told by supporters of the wall that we need to fall in line or resign. We've been accused of taking money from developers, money under the table, called thieves, liars, and much more. This started from day one, and things escalated to a level where police began canvassing our neighborhoods. Speaking only for myself, I have not called anyone on this dais names, puppets, fools, racist, or anything else. I have from day one, and even this evening when I came in, I speak to everyone and say hello, good evening, or try and have some form of conversation. Next thing I would like to address is on March the 5th, when I received a call from the Communications Director, who stated the mayor asked that I be contacted. I went to Town Hall, and the Communications Director then telephoned the mayor and said that she wanted to speak regarding a statement that was being drafted. And I quote again, "The mayor said to calm the citizens and put things to rest." The mayor was told that I was in the office and asked if he could be put on speaker, which he said yes. When he was on the telephone, the Communications Director read aloud the statement that was drafted. I made no additions or corrections to the statement. The director then asked the mayor if he had any additions or corrections, which he stated no, and asked what was the next step to release the statement. The Communications Director then said, "Would you like to review it further, or should I email it to you?" And the mayor responded, "No." The Communications Director then stated it would be released to the staff and the board, then to social media site, social media sites, which is what was done, and was given the okay to do so. It was not indicated in the conversation when she was speaking that this was a draft. It was later then pulled back after it was reviewed and some board members reviewed it. Another point I want to go to in the March 11th statement was stated the mayor pro tem, and this was done at the beginning of the term for the new incoming board, violated, that the mayor pro tem implied that we violated open meeting laws with an email exchange, an accusation which had to be silenced by the town attorney, saying we should stay away from things that can get the town in trouble. This statement that was made by the mayor was in essence false. Yes, I made the comment that open meeting laws were violated through an email exchange. I also cited the statute applicable to the violation. The accusation was not silenced because I completed the statement in its entirety. But the town attorney then commented, "To protect the town from anything further, he wanted to make the statement, not because I was wrong in my citations or information." There have been many attacks from many, from members on this dais directed at myself and others. The information is true or not, is not true, or not justified, or not being confirmed before communicating misinformation to the public. I'm trying to understand why is it so important to gather support from blogs, videos, and statements or anything else before knowing that you are right in making that statement? I do not think anyone should try to make their light shine brighter by trying to dim anyone else's, or why you, it has to be one is right and one is always wrong. To move forward and have any open lines of communication to work for the betterment of Waxaw, as we all want to do, there must be accountability. I am accountable for my actions if in any way it has offended or anyone on this board. But I believe that everyone has to own that same accountability. And there is not a 3-2 accountability factor where one side is always the bad guy or wrong. There must be accountability, but you spoke also of trust. But trust is not given. It is something that is earned by one's actions. And how can you ask that I trust commissioners who put out information with regard to me, which incites actions of their base against me? There needs to be an understanding, or more of an understanding, that we can disagree without being disagreeable, without being quick to judge, without being quick to attack. I believe, as I believe many of you do on this board, that the citizens of Waxaw, not that's 2,000, 3,000, or 10,000, but the over 25,000 people that we serve and that we have been elected to serve, deserve the best from everyone on this dais. And I hope that the best is given by us all in moving forward.
Thank you. I'll just respond by saying I will hold myself accountable. And I'll apologize to this board and I'll apologize to the people for not taking the time to ask our Communications Director to email me that letter and take the time to review it. I was happy that the public statement was being made in the first place, and I was hopeful that it would calm things down. But after reviewing it and reading it myself, I realized it was in error and it needed to be corrected, and it needed to be corrected immediately. So I acknowledge the error that I made in allowing that to go out hastily and the error I made trying to get that message out more quickly without reviewing things. It happened in the middle of the day while I was at work. So there were other pressing things as well on my mind, not just the public statement. But that's a mistake that I made, and I own up to that. And I apologize to the entire board for making that mistake. I should not have allowed that message, that public release, to go out without actually reviewing it, sitting down on my own calmly reading it. It was something that I heard over the phone, and it sounded pretty good at the time, so I figured why not? But once I read it, I realized it's, it rang a little differently than what I actually meant. So I wanted it changed. So I hold myself accountable for that, and I apologize to the entire board. I apologize to the town for any confusion it may have caused. I apologize to the Communications Director as well. That's a very fair comment as well to kind of putting her in the middle of that situation as well, demanding she retract something so quickly. So yeah, I'll own up to that.
Next, I'd like to get a motion to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A6 to discuss a personnel matter in addition to going into closed session to discuss pursuant to General Statutes 143-318.11A3 to discuss preserved, to preserve attorney-client privilege. All in favor? Any opposed? Well, yeah, someone make the motion.
Somebody say so moved.
So moved.
So moved.
Yes. In this closed session, I would like to invite the interim town manager, our town attorney, our director of HR, as well as our town clerk. And a request that the heat be turned up in the closed conference room. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in closed session. Thank you.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This open session is now open. Can I get a motion to withdraw the offer for interim town manager Daniel Roseman?
Motion to withdraw the offer to Daniel Roseman for town manager.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. At this point, just to announce, we will be posting our ad for the interim, for the permanent town manager will be posted starting tomorrow at various sources and places, so look for that. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Before you do that, I'll go ahead and make the motion to direct the Waxahaw HR director to repost the position for the town manager effective tomorrow.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
The motion carries. Now, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor? All opposed? Anyone opposed? No?